Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town of Air Select Board meeting for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024. This meeting/hearing of the Air Select Board will be held in-person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting/hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with a particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID number 978-772-8220, which note this is a new Zoom number, or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about the remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, the Assistant Town Manager, at atm@air.ma.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to the meeting. If you could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to make one amendment to the agenda, and that is, under the approval of the 2025 license renewals, I would like to also add in to discuss the fees, as we've done in the last couple of years.
All right, I make a motion to accept with that amendment.
Seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. There are a couple of announcements this evening. Hold on. Ready to go? Okay. Oh. Nope. It's my first time, people. You're doing great.
There it is.
Look at that.
They're good.
Getting it. All right. Almost got it. Almost got it. You're doing great. All right, that's as big as I can get it. Something went wrong. I'm sorry to the guys, I was having a conference all day and day. Shh. You commute them. All right, so the first announcement is that this Saturday will be the Holiday Stroll downtown with the tree lighting at 4:45. There will be a tuba concert here at Town Hall at 2:00 PM on Sunday, the 15th, and on Sunday, the 22nd will be the Santa Parade at 1:00 PM from Peroni Park up to the high school, and with a meet and greet with Santa after the parade. Thank you. The other announcement is that our winter parking ban is in effect from November 15th to April 15th. There's no on-street parking from midnight to 6:00 AM. This is the same parking ban that we have every year. Sorry. And you can see if somebody's parked on the street or sidewalk, you may be ticketed or towed. If you're parking during a snowstorm, it will be ticketed and it will be towed. So no on-street parking between midnight and 6:00 AM. The next item is for public input. First, I'm going to turn it over to Robert.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have an exciting presentation tonight and gift to the town, and through you, Mr. Chair, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Spencer Christie and Mr. Fred Depp to introduce our guests this evening.
Hi, thank you so much for having us here tonight. We are thrilled to be able to recognize one of our students. This is a student who's new to us this year, Melina Simeon, and her brother Dimitrus, actually in the back, new to us as well. Melina is an incredible student at the high school. Her grades are phenomenal. She's also an incredibly talented artist. So for our Veterans Day program this year, she painted an incredibly symbolic work that she's going to explain a little bit about, but before we get to that, I want to give a big thank you to Mr. Michael Seigwin, who's an art teacher at the high school and has really been doing a great job for many years in guiding our young artists to fulfill their potential. So take it away.
So like he said, I painted this for the Veterans Day program. It's, I have many symbolic images in here. The, I have the poppy field, and each poppy is dedicated to each veteran that served in the military. I made a tree in the center with the five branches of military, so they are seen and honored. There are three planes, which represents the people who are currently in the military, who are wanting to join the military, and who have served in the military. I have the American flag folded to represent the veterans who have passed and who have been a part of the military. So I also dedicated this to all veterans and to my grandfather, who was raised in Air and lived in Air his whole life. Yeah.
Wonderful job.
Thank you.
So through the chair, we have a special certificate of recognition that we'd like to present. Come on up, and we'd like to also do picture with you and your beautiful artwork, and this is going to be displayed prominently here at the Air Town Hall with a little plaque explaining what was just explained about the picture and the artist. So congratulations, and Selectman Livingston.
Just do me a favor, could you pronounce your first name for me again?
Melina.
Melina, okay, good, I would have said it right. Okay, good. I'm honored that the chair has asked me to read this because I'm also a veteran, and I just want to say, that is beautiful. And everything that you added to it and all the symbolism, spot on. Congratulations and thank you ever so much for what you did. Okay? So with pride, the Town of Air would like to present to you the certificate of special recognition proudly presented to Melina Simeon. Did I get?
Simeon, yes.
Simeon, I'm sorry about that. We hereby recognize you for your original artwork dedicated to her grandfather and all of the veterans of the towns of Air and Shirley, and to her donation of her original artwork to be publicly displayed in the Air Town Hall, given this third day of December 2024 by the Air Select Board, Sean C. Copeland, Chair, Christopher E. Taveras, Vice Chair, and myself, Janice Lee Livingston, Clerk. And again, thank you ever so much, and we will make sure that it is treated with honor and respect while being displayed in this Town Hall.
Thank you.
Holy, it is. It is quite beautiful, quite beautiful. You had the paparazzi. Which way do we look?
We'll be here real quick for the town picture. Excellent.
Not those events.
Sorry to spring it on you, but I thought it was most appropriate. Is anybody else here or online for public input? Okay, not seeing or hearing anybody. I'm going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Town of Air Municipal Aggregation Update from Colonial Power Group Incorporated.
So Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have this evening a brief presentation on the Town of Air's municipal aggregation. We've been working with the Colonial Power Group, and we're joined on Zoom by Mark Capadona and Denise Allard from Colonial that will lead the presentation that's in the packet. And at the conclusion of their presentation, Ms. Carolyn McCreary, who's been working with them, will come up for a brief presentation related to this. And just to conclude, to remind, I know the board is aware, but the public, Town Meeting authorized this under Article 29 of the April 24th, 2023 Town Meeting to develop an aggregation program for residents in Air to get power more, power cheaper and more efficiently. So with that, they're both on Zoom tonight. I'll turn it over to Mark and Denise, and then we'll have Carolyn come on. Mark and Denise.
Sure, how are you? So I think we're here to give a brief update and to talk about next steps, and I'll get maybe some direction from the Select Board on where to go with product selection. So as Robert mentioned, in your packet, you have a two-page implementation outline. It starts with just steps where we've been, and I won't run through any of that, but as mentioned, this started off with Town Meeting in April of 2023, and the good news is after about a year and a half, you have an order from the DPU. So the DPU has authorized the town to move forward, go out in the competitive marketplace and get some pricing for your residents. So this is good news. So now everything is back in the hands of the town. So just to remind everyone, this is an opt-out aggregation, so what this means is that everybody who is currently on National Grid Basic Service would get automatically switched over to the Town's program once launched. Folks can certainly opt out in the initial 30 days or any time thereafter, but if they don't do anything, when they get the mailing, they would be automatically enrolled. So just want to get that out there upfront. The good news is, the DPU has some new guidelines in place that is also going to allow us to get a list from the utility of all the folks that have already signed individual contracts with suppliers, so a constellation, or a clear view, or a clean choice. And those folks will get a postcard, letting them know that the town has this program to offer, and they can certainly opt in if they choose, but we wouldn't move them automatically because they've already made a choice. So those are kind of the two. So we met with Carly after the town got its order, and we talked a little bit about next steps, timing, and products, and that sort of thing, and what we decided was we would get the Town's utility data from National Grid, we'd go out into the marketplace, and we'd get some indicative pricing for the town to review. So you also have a two-page pricing matrix in your packet that has some pricing, we can talk about that in a little bit. But just to get an idea of what the Town's load would price that out in the marketplace. We also should talk about timing. So National Grid's residential rate right now is 16 cents, and that rate runs through the end of January, and that's going to change on February 1. We don't yet know what that rate is going to be. They go out on December 11th, and then they should file that rate with the DPU within a week, so we should know within a week. We think it's going to be somewhere between 13.5 and 14. It's just an estimate right now. So obviously, the town can't make any decisions on pricing until you know what the National Grid price to compare is, but we just wanted to get some pricing in front of you so you could get an idea and see some product selections. So what we talked about with Carly is, seeing you're not going to know the National Grid rate till the middle of December, the earliest you could kind of launch after that would be in April. So what that timeline would look like is, the town would need to sign a contract with the supplier by the end of January, and then we'd look to get that mailing out there to folks on Basic Service. We'd look to mail by the middle of February. They have a 30-day opt-out period, which would take you to the middle of March, and then folks who didn't opt out would be enrolled in April. Of course, we would come out and do some information sessions, we're going to work with the town on some language to be posted on the website, do a draft press release, so we get all the information out there, FAQs to post, et cetera. We want to make sure everybody has all the information. But that is the kind of tentative timeline we were talking about. Certainly, we can move that if that doesn't make sense, but that's where we wanted to start. So any questions before we move on to pricing? I know I just said a lot, so if you have any questions on process, or timing, or just UniAg 101?
Your question? No.
Pretty clear, Denise.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So I'm going to hand it over to Mark. We have a matrix in front of you. It lists a bunch of products and a bunch of terms. We got pricing from four different suppliers, listed supplier 1 through 4 at the top, and we'll just talk a little bit about, the town can have a default product that everybody will get automatically moved to, right? All the folks on Basic Service would be automatically moved to this default product, whatever we decide that will be. And then you have the ability to offer one or two optional products with a varying degree of renewable energy content. We can talk about that with Carolyn as well.
Denise, sorry.
Those are kind of the decisions that need to be made.
Sorry, Denise. One second.
Where's this matrix?
Oh, it's in the packet.
Right, so what about the viewers at home?
Oh, Max, can we pull up the packet with the matrix?
Does she have it? Can she share her screen, or is that, can we not do that?
I think Mark, Mark, do you have it there?
I have it up. If I'm given the authority, I'm happy to share my screen.
All right, hold on.
How do you do that? How do we allow them to share?
Are you hosting the meeting? You have to be the meeting host.
Yep.
Yeah. But it's a new system, I don't know what button. Yeah, I don't know how to do it. Meanwhile, Pauline has a question.
Hi, Max. Pauline?
Actually, I'm trying to help y'all, I don't have a question. I'm the only viewer online, and I've already looked at all the documents, so I'm happy to just listen if you can't figure out how to screen share it for a while. But it's just me.
Well, yeah, but it's also for, you know, anybody watching on TV, so.
I want you to stop the meeting to be able to get to screen share. You can screen it whenever you want.
Okay, thank you.
Just trying to help.
But this is a brand-new system. This is not, yeah, so. So, but no, I mean, this, we gotta, we gotta be a little better prepared when we come into this meeting. Yeah. All right, got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Max. Thanks, thanks. Okay, sorry Denise, you can, Mark, you can continue.
Perfect, all right, this looks perfect. So up here in the blue, or dark gray, if you will, that's just what I'm going to call our information bar. It's just telling us, okay, this is the start term, it all starts in April. Again, just tentative right now what we're thinking about, and these are the end terms, what the date would be if it ended, and then just the length of time, 6, 12, 18, 24, 30, 36. Supplier 1, supplier 2, supplier 3, supplier 4. This right here, anything shaded in what I'll call peach or orange, is the low price for that term of the product, and the product is right here. The standard retail electric supply meets MASS requirement, that's a National Grid, you know, an apples-to-apples comparison, 63% renewable, and I'll just go up, you know, the top line, so supplier 4 is the low price at 10, 9, 2, 7. And the reason we're waiting until after National Grid's price comes out, you know, sometime in late December or later December, is to make sure that we start the program, we're certain that we're underneath that rate. So that's why we're saying, hey, best thing we should do is just get everyone through the holiday and then start in January when we know that rate is, and then, you know, we can get started, you know, with that April timeframe with the meter reads. That's an apples-to-apples comparison there. I want to speak quickly to, you see a 4, 1 through 9, 30, that has no winter months in that, and take a look at your rate, it's 10, 9. You simply add in six more months that has all the winter in, and you're already at 13, 2. No magic in any of this, you add another six months, doesn't have winter in it, and the rate falls right back down to the 12, 2. So that 18-month to that 30-month, you're seeing a sweet spot, if you will, because you have more, you have more shoulder months than winter months in it. Absolutely no magic, simple arithmetic. The high-priced months are December, January, and February drive all of ISO New England's pricing. So what we want to talk to you about is, this first tranche, the 63 for, in red, the 63 for the 2025, that's what the renewable requirement is if you want to serve residential load or any retail load in Massachusetts. The next tranche down is 63% with 37% national wind recs, and you can see, that's adding a slight cost of about 1/10 of a penny, you know, not even the full. So in that scenario, to the customer, it means about 60 cents per month, or $7.20 for the year. And then, we're coming down, there was, there's been a push for some nuclear renewables, and Carly asked us to also price those in. We priced in an extra 5%, and those come in, a different supplier, but very similar, the 11, 1, 4, 0 compared to the 11, 11, 1, 102. So you can see that's also a very economical choice, and then we stepped it up to 10%. You can see that, again, very economical, as believe it or not, it's actually below that, at the 10%, it's actually below, it's 11, 0, excuse me, slightly above that, the 11, 0, 2, 7. So then we come down to the third, to the very bottom, and those are MASS Class 1s. MASS Class 1 means it's a Massachusetts renewable project built after 1997, most of it's wind and solar, that was built after 1997. If you're into a green nature product, this is what many of the renewables consider the gold standard. And on the next page, I think Denise has simply stepped up, it goes 5%, and then you can also see 10, or, you know, what would be the Cadillac, is 100% MASS Class 1s. So what we're looking from, you know, from the Select Board and the manager is, okay, there's a bunch of pricing here, all of it fairly advantageous, what are we looking for, for a product for default? What would you like to see for something to allow people to opt into? And then, are we comfortable with that April start right now, moving forward? That way there, when we go out and find a date with Carly for final pricing, we'll have the, you know, you don't have to look at all of this pricing, just certain terms and certain products. Make things easier, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have on supply.
Questions so far?
Not so far.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Ultimately, it's up to the board, but I think that on the timeline piece that Denise and Mark have put out, I think that makes sense. In other words, if the board ultimately, you know, makes a decision in January, as Denise outlined, with the goal of April, and in between January and April is the public outreach and all of that information. I mean, I think that timeline is acceptable, and I know that the Town Meeting and the people wanted the aggregation option, and it took a year and a half, which we knew it would through the whole DPU process, so I think on the timeline piece, that makes sense. Now, the question will come, you know, for further discussion as far as the options, and through you, Mr. Chair. Mark, Denise, are we looking at three potential options, or could you clarify what the board's choices would be?
So the short answer is, yes, you could have three, meaning one, the default that Denise spoke about, that's where everyone would be put, so that's where 95% of the people will stay, and then you can have options depending on what you choose for your default. So if you didn't choose, and if you don't mind going up to the prior page, if you did not choose the, if you did not choose the, you know, what I'll call a basic service product, then you could, you could have any of the other ones, and then you could have, I'm just going to use like, an example, right? Let's just say we went with the, the nuclear recs were mentioned, so you said, I'm just going to use the 18-month, the nuclear recs, then you could have someone opt down if they're on a, you know, fixed income, or might be a low income, things of that nature, might have that as an option, and then maybe the 100% MASS Class 1 for someone that, you know, was really interested in the renewable aspect of energy. Truly, and I mean this honestly, this is what I love about aggregation, up to the town and what they're thinking. So you could make it the meats and let everyone opt up to the nuclear and so forth, it's really, it's your, it's really what the town is looking to do.
Pauline has a question.
Pauline?
Sorry, the mute button won't stay put for me. I want you all to know, before I ask my question, I am an all-electric house, no oil, no gas, no anything, it's all electric, and I did that on purpose. So I have been changing suppliers on a regular basis, year to year, or year to every two years. My current supplier is 12.99, and it's a 100%, I don't know the phrase, what do I want to say, energy supplier, it doesn't, it, everything is wind, solar, or whatever the other is, water, I guess. Are any of these prices, which I realize aren't merely estimates, are any of these an option for that type of service, that type of supplier?
The answer is yes. The second tranche down has a national wind recs, those recs are not in ISO New England, most of them come from Texas, Oklahoma, and the hills in Pennsylvania, but you can see that they're very close, you know, if you're going to say, you know, it's 12, 4 for the 18-month, and 12, 6 for the 30-month, and that is 100% renewable.
That's the phrase, I'm so sorry, I couldn't remember.
No problem.
That's, so we will at least be offering that to the residents, because I'm sure there are a lot more people than me that would be interested in something like that.
That's certainly an option. The answer is yes, that's certainly an option.
Great, thanks.
But not my choice, ma'am.
Well, your choice is not my choice, but that's okay. Thank you so much.
Yes. No, 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 I'm saying to you, I don't get to make that choice, Pauline. It's for the board and the manager.
Okay, well, I hope the board will make that choice. Thank you for that explanation. Take care.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, maybe through you. At this point, I know that Carolyn McCreary has been working with Mark and Denise, and as many know, Carolyn is very involved with the nuclear energy movement, and so through you, if she could come on up and offer some thoughts from her perspective. Carolyn?
Good evening.
Evening, thank you. So I first want to give you a little background as to who I am and how I got where I got. I sat in your seats. I was on the board from about 2006 to '12. And on, in 2011, Air became a designated green community, largely through my efforts, because, you know, I wanted us to become green, and, you know, at the time, I was, you know, a big fan of solar and have solar panels on my house, and I did what Pauline has just described, is that I electrified everything, I have an electric car, and, you know, and as I electrified everything, of course, my energy bill went up, and, you know, I had really been led to believe that my solar panels were going to take care of most of my energy needs, electricity needs, which of course, it does not. It doesn't even come close. And so, you know, it made me rethink what it is that I was promoting, you know, in terms of solar. And then I heard a presentation. And, um, then I heard a, a, um, a presentation on nuclear energy and started studying what it is, how it works, uh, its benefits and its, its shortfalls, and, um, have come squarely on the, on the view that, um, nuclear energy is the way we need to move forward for clean energy. So let me just give you some of the facts about it. First of all, it is CO2-free. You know, um, a nuclear reaction does not produce any, any CO2. It's, and a nuclear reaction is very, very, um, energy-intensive. Um, A, and Susan will help me show you this. A, uh, a, an, a nuclear pellet about the size of a gummy bear has as much energy in it as a ton of coal. So it's very dense, and that density leads to a lot of its advantages. One advantage is there is very little waste. So in your lifetime, if you got all of your electricity from nuclear, the amount of waste that you would produce is about the, the size of this can. So, you know, if you consider, you know, if, I mean, we all know, like, what kind of ash you get from burning wood. You know, can you imagine burning wood your whole life for all of your energy needs and, and storing that ash here? And of course, you know, coal and, and, you know, produces the CO2 and, um, wind and solar. Um, you know, even though they are free in terms of the energy, look at what it takes to, to harvest that energy. You know, I have these solar panels on my roof. They only last like twenty-five years. And then what are we gonna do with the waste? And, uh, nuclear plants, uh, have been in this country for six, sixty-seven years. It was, uh, shipping port, um, uh, Pennsylvania that opened the first nuclear plant in nineteen fifty-seven. And it's, and it's totally safe. No one in, in has, has perished or been hurt by any of, of the nuclear waste or the nuclear, um, uh, processing that we've done. Uh, it, it's, uh, there's a small footprint from it. If you think about the amount of land used for solar panels and wind turbines, and compare that to, uh, what's, a, a, a nuclear plant can fit into a, you know, a, say, a square mile for three hundred and sixty square miles required for, um, uh, solar and, uh, wind. So, um, I just want to say that our, I think that, um, the default product that you select should be the one that has the highest amount of nuclear in it. You know, and, and as, as, um, Mark was saying earlier, if we, if we do, uh, say, a wind option, we're getting wind from Texas. I mean, what does that take in terms of the amount of space used for the transmission lines? You know, to, to get it from there to here. Um, that's, you know, something that people don't really talk about. In nu, um, ISO New England, we get our, um, nuclear power from two places, from Seabrook in New Hampshire and Millstone in Connecticut. And we want these plants to flourish and to, and actually, there is, um, there, in, in Seabrook, there is approval for an additional, um, uh, pa, uh, nuclear, um, generator. And, um, I've, and, and the more we can support nuclear through our own actions, you know, the, the, the further we'll, we'll move toward becoming a really a green community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
So I'm a health physicist, worked at nuclear power plant, or not plants, but research reactors for.
Wow.
Twenty-six years. So I fully agree with everything you say. Um, and I believe that nuclear is also the, the way of the future. So you have a staunch advocate, uh, in, in me, uh, as far as that goes. I appreciate you coming.
Sure.
Thank you, Carol.
Right, Mr. Chair, I think, um, as Denise and Mark mentioned earlier, um, sort of the two things we're looking for guidance on tonight was, one, the timeline, which I think we've covered. I think that the timeline set forth for January in going to April for implementation makes sense and has the appropriate level of the public outreach and information in it. The second question is, you know, what are the, what are the select board, ultimately the town? What are the, the three choices that, um, we'd be looking for in the aggregation? And, and we just heard from Carolyn, um, about the, the nuclear, uh, piece of it. I don't know if there's any thoughts from the board, um.
Are we looking to make that choice today or for January?
Mark or Denise, do, does the board need to make a decision tonight or would it be by January?
So it's not like tonight is paramount, but at some time before the end of December, we would need to know to let the supply community know, these are the, uh, these are the products. The one thing I did want, I did want to add, um, those percentages could be changed for, um, any of the, you know, just, we just chose five. You could make that seven, you could make it twelve, you could make it three, if it, if you're price-sensitive. But we need to let the supply community know, uh, manager, just so you're not, uh, you're not looking at all of this pricing, you know, you'll only look at those three products and, and, you know, uh, whatever their terms are. So it makes your job that much easier on final pricing.
Uh huh.
But it doesn't need to be decided right now, tonight. No, it does not. No.
I say put it on the agenda. Make our formal decisions. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Pauline has a question.
Pauline?
And so I would say, yes, cheers. Please keep it on the agenda so you don't lose sight of it, which unfortunately sometimes happens with other things. But please make sure that you not only look into the nuclear proposal as Carolyn suggested, but the hundred percent clean energy, um, that I couldn't figure out when I spoke earlier, that, um, was also talked about, because that would give three options to residents. And a hundred percent clean energy is at least as good as nuclear. And I just, I just wanted to make sure you all keep that on your front agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is this, or, oh, and that, why don't you take the public and I just have one question?
I have, I have a question about recs. Does that mean the wind is actually produced and consumed in Texas and somehow we get credit for it? Is that what that means?
Yeah, so every, every meter watt of, 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 uh, wind energy that's produced, they get a, uh, a financial certificate that's called a renewable energy certificate. You buy that, and when you buy that, you get credit for that wind. It's the only way to call your energy green. There's no way to get clean energy directly to your house unless it happens to be on your roof. That's a little bit different. But the power just flows if the power flows on the grid. We all have the same mix. And then if you buy more renewables, you're able to call it green.
Well, there's a problem. We're not in Texas's grid. We're on the ISO New England grid. So technically, when you say you're getting a hundred percent green electricity, it's really coming from the ISO New England grid. It's not coming from Texas. You're getting a credit. Is that right?
Well, a hundred percent, everyone is using the same ISO New England grid. And then all you do is, no one can say that they have anything different than the system mix, because there's no way of tracing electrons. It's just the, the financial that you put on top of that. That is a correct statement.
Right. And right now, we're getting twenty percent of our electricity from nuclear, just as we sit here. We don't even know it. Some people do. They're mostly under the radar in the closet. And more than half the people support nuclear power, especially when they find out, like Carolyn said, it contains a hundred percent of the waste. So, and it can be made right here in New England. It can be, we already have the transmission lines, and there's much less waste than solar and wind. You start burying those blades or burying those panels. They have to go somewhere. So I also encourage you to consider, you know, offering like, um, Pauline said, if there'll be three options, to definitely get the most nuclear you can. And like Carolyn said, in the default, but to encourage it, just to encourage more awareness. You know, we could bring someone here who knows more than we do, you know, about nuclear energy to answer questions, give a presentation.
Great, thank you.
Hi, Kurt Truskowski, thirty-nine Groton Harbor, wrote, uh, just, uh, point of clarification. Um, so the aggregation goes live, um, we will then be receiving power from the municipal aggregation. What I'm hearing is that the, what I'm, what I'm, want to confirm is that there will be a default option, uh, that will be, being supplied to our houses through the aggregation. But even then, we will have another few options to choose? Okay. So in other words, if for any reason the town would default to, um, hydro and window, like, just, but then the nuclear could still be an option?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So the options will always be available?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's all I wanted to, if, so what I wanted to confirm is that if the town defaults to one source, that we aren't locked into as a consumer. We can still choose several, several of the options that are offered through the municipal aggregation.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you. That's all.
Thanks. Any other comments, questions?
So, Mr. Chair, just one final question for Mark and Denise. Um, on the, on the matrix, the, the, the top one, the standard retail electric with the sixty-three percent, uh, for twenty twenty-five, um, what is the, the mix of that, um, electric? So I know we talked about, um, the renewable option and the nuclear option. What is, what is that primarily in terms of energy, that top one?
Mark, I want to interrupt before you start. I think you also have that in the packet. There's a sheet called mass renewable energy content with a bunch of, with a table and a bunch of percentages.
Oh, yes. Yep.
Okay, so Mark can speak to it, but if you're.
Yeah, thank you, Denise. Yeah, it's.
You're welcome.
Go on, now.
And it, it looks, Mr. Manager, it looks worse than it is. So it, it's made up for twenty twenty-five of twenty-seven percent mass class one, three percent other clean generation, giving you a total of what they call the, uh, clean energy standard, thirty percent, and then other existing clean energy. And if you're asking about what is the other existing clean energy, it's just down there, it's wind, solar, and landfill gas. And then you have class two, and then some, um, waste of energy, and that gets you to the, uh, sixty-three point three percent in twenty-five.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
I'm good.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chair, so the next, the board next meets, excuse me, the board's next meeting is December seventeenth. Um, so Mark, Denise, through the chair, if the board were to make a decision on the three options for December seventeenth, would that be consistent with your timeline?
Very consistent.
Okay.
You should know, maybe that day, maybe the day after what cash flow bridge price is.
Okay.
And after the holidays, we can get together and just get a timeline. Just a minute. One question.
Yeah.
Do you already have the authority to sign off? Uh, and the reason is, it, we only have a small window to sign off, um, on that, you know, final bid day. At some point, you just need the authority to sign off on behalf of the town.
So, Mark, uh, what the board has historically done is so on the seventeenth, um, the board will make the decision on the three, and as part of that, they'll authorize the town manager to sign, because they are aware that it is time-sensitive. So in the past, when we've done these things, they, they, to evoke, give me the authorization at that point. So will that work?
Perfect.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chair, it sounds like, you know, for the seventeenth, I think everybody be thinking, you've heard the, the case on the nuclear piece as the default. I've heard from, uh, Pauline on the, uh, renewable option. It, it's looking like something potentially, you know, nuclear, renewable, and maybe the default. But I think, uh, we'll keep it on the agenda and.
That would be my vote right there.
Yes.
I agree.
Okay. All right, yeah. So we'll, um, we'll put it on the agenda for December seventeenth, and we'll have a decision for you on, uh, the three options.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Carolyn, thank you as well.
Thank you.
All right.
I can get noise.
Good evening, Dan. How are you?
Hey, good evening, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. So I do have a brief presentation for the first item.
Yep, hold on.
Yep, take your time.
No, don't tell me to take it.
Dan, this is doing double duty. Yeah.
You're a pro. You're doing great.
Um.
I was doing it, Mona, this is falling off.
Not allowed to touch anything. You already turned this off earlier.
Look at, see, look at that.
All righty, and.
Slide show. Great. Yeah, so the, oh, there it goes. The first item on the agenda for the DPW report is, uh, the, uh, traffic regulations and, uh, discussion and recommendations on the Sandy Pond Safety Zone. So just back in time, uh, looking back to two thousand and seventeen, the state offered, uh, new, um, laws and regulations the towns could accept. And at the time, Air, uh, took advantage of this. And so they're shown on the screen here. The first is related to town-wide speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour. That's where there's unposted speed limits or thickly settled areas. Um, and then option, another option was to institute safety zones in, in certain areas. And actually, we, we did one, you know, at the now former hospital, which we haven't implemented because of that situation recently. But also back in twenty seventeen, one was, um, authorized for the Sandy Pond Road area near the town beach. So that's kind of the background. And, and recently, we completed the Sandy Pond Road Complete Streets Project, and we implemented the, uh, the safety zone. So if you want to go to the next slide, I think that shows, uh, what I was just talking about. So as part of the Sandy Pond Road Complete Streets Project, we did install, um, we moved the speed feedback signs, installed those in the proper location for the twenty mile per hour safety zone. And, um, the reg, the regulations with MassDOT require this zone to be a quarter mile in length minimum. So that's why it's such a long stretch. And it doesn't allow it to be seasonal, and this is something we looked at recently as we were kind of observing the area and, and receiving feedback also from residents and passerby's through the area. Um, and I also did reach out to MassDOT to confirm things. Um, so this is kind of what we have out there now. Um, go to the next slide, and it shows a map, I believe the next slide's the map, of the current setup. So, uh, this is the Sandy Pond Beach area. You can see Sandy Pond in the upper part of the screen with the Snake Hill Road dividing Sandy Pond and Flanagan, just to give you bearings. In the red area, that's the twenty mile per hour safety zone. It's about a quarter mile in length as required. Um, outside of that, you go from thirty miles an hour, dropping right down to the twenty. Um, so next slide will show, um, a few bullets of some of our observations. Um, the speed radar signs and the, the speed feedback, they do seem effective. It has reduced the speed out there. Um, I think people might be getting a little used to them now and used to the air and maybe going a little faster than at first. Um, it does seem unnecessary, aside from the peak summer hours, like right now, it, you know, the, the beach is closed. Um.
It's a painful, painful safety zone.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and, and it is also the third bullet, vehicles follow very closely. So, you know, that, just going.
Very closely.
Too slow can actually be, you know, a, a cause for concern as well. I mean, especially when you first get to the twenty mile per hour zone, it could slow people down too quickly and causing an issue. Um, and we do still have south, just south of Sandy Pond Road on Snake Hill Road, we've had speeding complaints in that area. So those are kind of the recent observations of this, this general area. Uh, next slide. Um, so I've been working with, uh, Police Chief Gil. Thanks for coming too. And Matt Hernan, the town engineer, as well as I mentioned, MassDOT, on, on, you know, what can we do out there based on what we're, we're seeing and observing? And the recommendation we've come forward with is to rescind the safety zone, the twenty mile per hour safety zone. There's no way to make it seize. mile per hour safety zone, there's no way to make it seasonal, we can't reduce the length of it to make it closer to the beach and a little more practical. But would be effective, would be just to sign it with a twenty-five mile per hour thickly settled zone and pull those closer to the town beach area where it make, actually makes sense. And we can also include portions of Snake Hill Road where we've had some recent concerns with, with speed as well in that, in that signing. So we want to show the next slide, that kind of shows a, a map of what we would, what we're recommending to do. So the yellow highlighted streets, those areas, that's where we would have the thickly settled twenty-five mile per hour area zoned. So it'd be tighter than it is now, the twenty mile per hour, but it would still be effective at reducing the speed of, of travelgoers through the area, especially, you know, when you get near the beach during summertime. And you still have, you know, you're reducing the green, the green, starting from the outside, the green is thirty-five, and it goes down to a thirty in the orange, and then yellow would be twenty-five, so you, so you gradually reduce the speed as you get toward the Sandy Pond Road beach area, which is a little better, you don't have anybody slamming their brakes on because it's all of a sudden twenty miles an hour like it is now. I think I covered all the ground, is, I don't know if there's anything else you.
No, it's just, sure, everybody who's driven through, it's a painfully slow twenty. It makes complete sense at the peak summer hours.
Right.
We have a lot of people, there are people parking everywhere, but once that summer hour kind of left, it was, you know, it, it was a tough drive.
It was like, how long is this road? I feel like I was on one ninety to whisper, I'm like, oh my god, this road isn't end.
Yeah.
But yeah, if there was a, if there was a seasonal option, I think that would be definitely what this is, but it just isn't a seasonal option for this, this directive.
Are there, are there other things we could explore seasonally, like temporary speed bumps or just in that particular area that might be beneficial?
I think I'd, I'd want to see how this is working maybe at first, and then start doing more measures out there if we had to, would probably be kind of the next best step forward rather than putting too much.
And I think one of, you know, one of the things that Dan touched upon is that people are getting used to the twenty, and it is slowing down. I mean, it's tough to try, it's like, you have to work to stay to twenty. But I think twenty-five, you know, is a, is, is kind of a reasonable area, I think people will get used to that, and I think it's, I think it's a try and see, just like this was, you know, we tried something, it didn't work, so we reevaluated, and we'll try something else to try and keep the road safe and safe. That's too low or too high.
Yeah, I mean, I think the reconfiguring of Snake Hill, you know, making that not the big sweeping turn where people coming through, as well as the much better crosswalk with the flashing lights, that wasn't done by the summer, was it? Like, did we get summer months?
I don't, uh, no, it was kind of the tail end.
It was like end of August, I think, when we were totally there.
So I think that makes a big difference, having a full summer season, besides, you know, I agree with this, but, you know, try what we have, what's, you know, if, if this is good, and, because that, that's always my, it's that crosswalk. And I think now with how we have it is, is good, it's very visible.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think, I think, so the board would have to, so if you went back to the first slide, you don't really have to, but there's that regulation we do have of the safety zone for Sandy Pond Road near the town beach, I think it would be a vote to rescind that from the traffic regulations, and then we can just move forward with part A of the speed limits there, is already, you know, covers us to put in the twenty-five mile per hour thickly settled. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I have no questions.
Okay.
I live on Sandy Pond, so I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to rescind the safety zone at the town beach area of Sandy Pond Road.
Seconded?
No, this is in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
Great, thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, and just one additional item on the DPW report.
No presentation now, right?
No, no presentation, just brief discussion. So as you know, at the Fall Town Meeting, the, the town did vote both Stormwater Enterprise Fund articles for approval, so I've been looking at the next steps for that and working with the town manager as well as the finance department. But just in short, at a, a board level, the select board, being the stormwater management entity for the town, will have to adopt the regulations for the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, and also adoption of the rates, so that's just in short. As you know, the work group prepared a draft of regulations and rates that were presented for town meeting and to the select board, so those, you know, essentially are what will be brought forward, and to get to that point, the, I would expect that the rate review committee will be involved to review the rates. We don't have to vote on that, anything tonight, but I'll probably come back at a later meeting with, you know, a, a brief memo and, and summary of what I'm saying today, but the, the board ultimately will, would need to vote to, I guess amend the charge of the rate review committee to add the stormwater rates as a, because right now it's water, sewer, and transfer station rates, so, so we're going to.
Now, or do we need to?
We do it in our next meeting?
Next meeting, we're going to seventeenth.
Yeah. So that's more at a board committee level, administrative, administratively, the finance department has to create the enterprise fund, the bookkeeping for it, billing will need to be set up, credit application, application availability of that, abatement availability, so a lot of administrative work in the background as well. So I, I think, you know, I've, I've started to put together a schedule, the aim would be to sort of, you know, have this coincide with the water and sewer rates at the March public hearing, reading, uh, meeting, I say reading, have the stormwater just coincide with that, you know, because it would be for FY twenty-six for next year. So that's really brief, kind of initial look at, at what we need to do next to, to implement the fund. So for, for a future meeting, probably next meeting, I'll, I'll provide a memo summarizing that better, and, and it would be the change of the charge, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just to add quickly, I think, and appreciate Dan giving the snapshot, I think, the next steps, so December seventeenth, we'll prepare for the board to amend the charge, the rate review committee is going to meet on December tenth to begin the discussion about water and sewer rates, but also Dan will get into some more detail on the stormwater piece. And I do agree with the director that I think it would make sense to have the stormwater follow the water and sewer, you know, process, and again, want to stress that the rate review process is a public process, they will make a recommendation to the select board, and there's a public hearing in March, so again, want to stress the public process, so.
All open.
Yeah, and then it would be implemented, go into effect July first, and because we bill quarterly, the first bill would, I think, would be September, right?
I think so, I, yeah, that'll be part of the figuring out, yeah, I think you're right, Robert, yeah.
So, more, more to come, but it's beginning to shake.
We don't get a July bill?
I don't know if we would in this instance, I'll, yeah, let me, I gotta do a little more work.
Yeah, 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 okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
But yeah, that was it for tonight.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the twenty-twenty-five license renewals and discussion of fees.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Through you to members of the board, you have in your packet, as prepared by the Assistant Town Manager, is a, a memo of all of the twenty-twenty-five license renewals, all spelt out, the license type, et cetera, as you'll see on the second page, just note that bar twenty-five is not renewing. So everything is here for your consideration, as in past years, just to, what we're looking for is the board to authorize, and then no license is ever released until full payment for the licenses made, as well as if there are any back outstanding water and sewer taxes, any outstanding bills, we don't release the license. So I know the board is aware of this, but just to reemphasize, what we're looking ultimately tonight is for your approval for the renewals, then we'll get the licenses together, but nothing will be released until the amount is paid and if there are any back fees owed. And then, Mr. Chair, if I may, through your amendment tonight, pre, in previous years, starting with COVID, when COVID first hit, the select board as the licensing authority had offered a, a discount on the licenses, and that had been, we began to ramp back up. Last year, was it last?
Twenty-five percent last year?
Yeah, last year, there was a twenty-five percent discount, taking into account, obviously the impacts from COVID and those impacts as businesses get back, you know, up, so through the chair who brought up tonight, that wasn't put in the packet, but obviously the, it is the board's purview if you'd like to, to consider a discount moving forward. And I, in, in the discount that was done last year, the twenty-five percent discount and checking, will not have a significant impact on the town's revenue.
I think if I remember, it was like twelve hun, twelve thousand dollars or something.
Yeah, I think it was approximately.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so with that, I'll stop, so it's up to the, the board ultimately would looking for if you do, it would be a vote, you know, for any discount, and then a vote to authorize the license renewals.
And do you remember, did we do the discount across the board?
We did.
I mean, yeah, so.
Yeah, we just had all business license.
Yeah, okay, and that's a.
Reduced to, you know, by twenty-five percent.
Yeah, and I think especially for restaurants and stuff, there's still, like, nobody's at pre-COVID business.
Yeah, there's still issues, so.
Pauline has questions.
I'd be in favor of that, again, Pauline?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, two things. First was bar twenty-five's license transferred to total ravioli?
Isn't that what we did the last time they were here?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that was the last meeting, we gave them their Vic license, I'm not going to try to pronounce.
Yeah, so it's just that bar twenty-five as an entity isn't renewing, but the ravioli theory, right, is that what it is?
Yeah.
It's on, yes, they're on there.
Totally, but ravioli theory is a little hard to make, sorry. All right, thank you for that, and isn't far as the twenty-five percent, eh, just as a resident, I'm not in favor, but you all do, are going to do what you want to do. I think it's, I think restaurants are recovering more than people realize. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts on?
Well, last year when we did the twenty-five percent, we did give, give a heads up, like, hey, don't be expecting that again.
Yep.
However, comma, I think too, I mean, she's kind of right, restaurants are doing a little better than what people think, but when you account for all the other high prices and everything, this is, you know, just kind of helping out a little bit, so I'm not opposed to keeping it at the same as we did last year, again, with the caveat of this isn't going to last forever, you know, so she has her hand up again.
Pauline?
Yeah, I do, so we just ten percent, you don't have to give a credit to everybody all the time, because whatever credit you all give falls back on all of us. So if you gave twenty percent last year, restaurants are really doing better, I can attest, I live behind one, just maybe reduce it a little bit, give the taxpayers, the residential taxpayers a break, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
And respectfully disagree, I believe last year we learned that the discount that we gave does not impact the taxpayer.
It did not impact, and as a reminder, we're, we sitting at this table are also taxpayers, so it would affect whatever we do, could affect our tax rate, but I don't think this will. But we could also consider not necessarily doing a twenty-five percent, we could consider maybe a twenty percent or something, again, easing them back into it too. Now, we do have a, at least one, two, two new businesses, so it probably helps them with their startup. I do think that the restaurants, you know, if we need them, you know, they would come back and deliver, you know, as far as, you know, hey, can you sponsor something or something like that, you know, so, and they in their own way do give back, so, so I'm open to a discount and open to, you know, a discussion as to what we want to do.
Yeah, I mean, if we're talking twelve thousand dollars, you know, I mean, that's not, something that's crippling, I, I don't think, to the, to the town, and it shows good faith, you know, helping out these businesses, but to your point, maybe, maybe twenty percent, fifteen, something that does ramp it down with the expectation that next year it's, it's back to, you know, full.
I mean, I, I'm in favor of twenty-five still, but if you guys, if twenty is where we're at, I could go with that, but I would also like to request for next year, a comparative study on what the license fees are for our surrounding towns, because I sometimes feel like our alcohol, our liquor license fee is a bit excessive, a bit high, but I'd just like to know how it compares to surrounding towns. And I do think, I agree, like.
It's been a few years since we did do the, the business licenses, we, we did them, well, yeah, a few years back, so yeah, it is time.
And I mean, I do agree, like, we did say last year, I just feel like, even like what you said, so much, the prices of so many things have gone so high, if we can lessen the burden on a little bit, our businesses pay a higher tax rate anyways, so, you know, like, it's not, like, we're giving them the world by giving them this like discount on their license.
Yeah, you had a good point too about, you know, I, I'm looking at this list, and many of them give back, and those are only the ones I know about, and I'm sure that's only a small amount that I know about, so I, I, I would be in favor of, you know, helping them out a little bit. So, I mean, I think twenty, twenty percent would be about where I am.
Yeah.
We can set on twenty?
I think twenty.
Okay.
Good, again, it's just, you know, with, again, to the businesses, you know, we can't do this forever, you know, and hopefully, the situation next year will be dramatically better, and we won't even have to consider it.
Yes.
You know, so, but, so, which motion should we do first, the license renewals? Yeah, I'll go, I'll do that first. So I'll make a motion that the twenty-twenty-five license renewals, as laid out in the packet, be approved pending a review for any outstanding bills, taxes, fees, assessments, liens, and et cetera. Yes.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair says aye. All right.
And I'll make a motion that the business license fees be at a twenty percent reduce rate.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Great. All right, next, we're going to move on to the town manager's report.
So, Mr. Chair, on the licenses, with the approval of the board, we'll get all of those ready for your signature, and we'll have the twenty percent reduction per the board and per the chair, and we're due for it for next year, Ms. Antonas will do the analysis, the study of the rates. Just briefly, under my report, you have in the packet the town warrants that were reviewed and approved since the board last met on November fourth. I hope that everybody had a lovely Thanksgiving, I would just want to give a special thanks to the, to the fire department, the police department, DPW, all of the volunteers and community members that made the Thanksgiving road race yet another huge success, and I believe they avoided the downfall of the rain, so that was a positive, and had almost nine hundred entrants, a formal entrance, so it was a, was a huge success and a great celebration for the town. As the chair mentioned earlier, we have three exciting holiday events coming up, we're looking forward to Saturday at four forty-five with the holiday stroll and the lighting of the Christmas tree, and Mr. and Mrs. Claus are going to be here, that's always exciting, the Tuba concert the following Sunday, and then the Santa Parade from Peroni Park to the high school that following Sunday, so a lot of exciting community events coming up, also the annual Toys for Tots Toys, Toy Drive, done by the police department. Also, the annual Toys for Tots Toys Toy Drive done by the police department is underway. You can bring toys to the police station. Also, Town Hall is a collection spot, and there are various collection locations throughout town that are on the Facebook page. So always another huge successful event. Just very briefly, as you have in the packet, some updates on the budget. The budget directive went out yesterday for December second with all initial budgets due back by December twenty-seventh, per the town budget calendar. The budget directive is stressing level funded, but level service funded budgets from all departments with a particular focus on savings and efficiencies. We are in very strong fiscal condition, as I often say, which is a true testament to this board, the finance committee, town meeting, all our boards and committees, and our residents and businesses. So that is a positive, that we're in a very strong position. I will, at the next meeting, talk a little bit more about the budget as we move forward. The capital planning process is is well underway. They met with the senior center committee the day after the board did the last meeting. Similar concerns and discussion came up there, so more to come on that. Additionally, we're going through the capital process, they're going to meet tomorrow with the library, facilities, and parks and rec department. And just want to point out that all of the capital requests are on the town's website under the capital planning page, and I think Selectment Tavarez will attest that the capital module that we're using is working well as part of the ClearGov platform. I mentioned earlier, the rate review committee will meet on December tenth to begin to look at water and sewer, and of course, the implementation of of stormwater. So a lot happening there. Lastly, the seventy-one Sandy Pond Road Working Group will have another meeting. They had their first meeting on November thirteenth. Their second meeting is tomorrow night at six in this room and on Zoom. And we'll be meeting with the consultant to begin to talk about conceptual ideas for the location, as well as designing the first public outreach forum. So we'll continue to keep the board updated as that process moves forward. So I don't know if the board has any questions. If not, I don't have any action items tonight, so that would be my report unless there's questions from the board.
No.
All right. Thank you.
Next item would be new business, like, remember questions, which there weren't any, but we just.
I did think of something.
Okay.
So if if it's possible, if we can get any update that can possibly be given publicly regarding the hospital situation.
Yep, yep.
Just to kind of keep that in the forefront.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can put that on the next agenda.
There was, there was something. Gone now, so must not have been very important. That was, that was definitely.
We'll put that on.
As far as for the hospital. I know I had something else, but.
Okay.
It was, it obviously wasn't important, so.
All right. Chris, any?
No.
All right, then moving on to the approval of meeting minutes for November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
So I had, I had no issues, I had one spelling area that I had him correct.
Okay. Yeah, that was the same one.
Yeah.
All right, then I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that the meeting minutes from November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four be approved, submitted.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. And with that.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Without further ado, I make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. We are adjourned.